Start with a motion in a second to assess the agenda. Make a motion to assess the agenda. I need a second.
All second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, open forum. Do we have anyone signed up for open forum? Nobody's signed up tonight. All right, we'll move down to communications. And Robin, you're on.
I am.
I'm on.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Show that up there. And this is the February financial report. February showing very similar percentage ratios as January did. Just wanted to let the board know that I am working on a revised budget, working with all the different funds, working in food service, community education, general fund. I will start, I will bring a revised budget to the board in April to have that approved. And then starting to meet with the administrative team members, put together details for the FY24 preliminary budget. I know we've worked on, we're working on the broad numbers right now, but we'll bring that down into more of the detailed numbers and bring that FY24 preliminary budget to the board in June to have that approved as well. Otherwise, that's all I have right now. You're going to hear a lot more from me later with adjustments. So that's really all I have. Unless anyone has any questions on it.
Any questions from anyone? All right, thank you, Robin. All right, we will keep moving on. We have an enrollment update, I believe, just for information. Is there anyone who can comment on the enrollment?
Right, just to compare, enrollment, I think it's showing 3277 on there. We did budget at 3295, so can remind the board of that. And then last year at this time, we had 3299. We should ask them that, kind of compare back. I did look at the very last enrollment, you know, just to figure out kind of where are some of these folks going. Out of that recent drop, 10 were moved, as in they moved some to some of their location. You know, two were students entering treatment, two went to a neighboring district. And then we had one, one drop, like a 15-day drop, didn't show up. Then we had another student that was assigned from our regular program, one of our school programs to the SORC program. And so we do, Michelle and I kind of track where people going. We try to follow up with people either come in or leave and try to get some response as to, you know, how, you know, why did they leave kind of thing, to try to understand that. But most people who do leave, you don't get them to respond back to you. Michelle's going, that's true. So it's hard to get kind of an understanding of where they're going. But I do, when that enrollment comes out each week, I have to look at where are they going. And so as we talk about, we've had quite a bit of enrollment drop this year. We started the year with the October 1 number at 3351. So, I mean, that's a, that's a big change. Obviously, something that we continue to monitor closely. And as we've mentioned before, that when a student's here for, let's say, six of the months of the school year, we do give funding for those six months if they happen to leave later in the school year. So we get those partial fundings and that type of thing. But that certainly is a concern to us because we know that that's the biggest driver of our revenue is our enrollment. So we've got to continue to pay close attention to that. And as we obviously look to next year and incoming kindergarten classes opposed to elder and senior classes graduating, kind of what it looks like. So certainly something that Robin and I have to pay close attention to.
Okay, we'll move on to conference attendance. Again, this is for information only, but did anyone have questions about the conference attendance? For new board members, they just let us see just how our conferences are attended, just for information. But if you had questions, please feel free to ask. Okay. Kate Moonen, we have most of the reps here tonight, so we won't do an update. We're on to board committee reports. Does anyone have any committee reports from committees that you've, meetings you've attended since the last board meeting? I don't think I have.
I don't think so. No, there is, there's been some committees.
Oh, then I.
Thanks, Peter.
Okay, perfect. Well, keep moving. We're on to Dean, your superintendent update.
Yeah, we have, we've always given you updates on our strategic plan and our goals at about this point of the year. We aren't going to be providing that tonight because we've been so busy with many other things. Our group still do meet. Each one of the admin is in charge of one of the strategic planning areas or the whole area. So they're continuing to meet and they're all back there. They're not in their heads, I guess. We're continuing to track with our goals and strategic plan. We continue to move things forward. But we felt like rather than give you an update that's more of just kind of a status pull, we'll give you that final update in June along with a presentation of all the things that we accomplished this year, what was the strategic plan and the goals. And then, of course, that can be probably a work session at some point with your new superintendent of saying, does this still work for us as far as our strategic plan and our goals? I think all those things make sense to do probably later in the school year or this summer. We won't have a strategic plan or goals update for tonight, but we'll have the final one in June. Legislatively, you know that I've been sending you just the updates that come from the different organizations and maybe you already get those. Maybe you subscribe to those, you can get those. So I'll just continue to forward them to you. I've had two visits to the Capitol. If you remember, Monday is an opportunity for MSBA. I'm not sure if any of you are going. But it's been really worthwhile in the six years I've been going down there. This is the most direct connectivity I've had. Where, again, I've got to know our Senator and our representative from the city pretty well. And so you're on a more personal basis with them. You can spend time in their offices and really talk through. And I do want to commend both Senator Crand and Representative Bradley. They really, they really understand what we need here in Shasago County. And they're tracking with things really well. Of course, you know, they're a part of the minority group, you know, so their voice in terms of enacting legislation or changing things aren't as strong because they don't have that backing. But they are representing what we've talked about. And I gave you a copy of our platform tonight. That's something that I gave to Senator Crand actually Wednesday over there with him. And so if you ever are going down there or you want to connect with them in some way, Michelle put that together, just to summarize what we're hoping to see on behalf of Shasago Lakes. And as I shared with you, if you want email, I sent it from my private Gmail address. They tend to pay attention to the ones as opposed to from the school district. So I would just encourage you, if you're sending an email to, and the legislature's use your private email address, and that tends to get a response. I did get a response on my private email address to front our conversation, paying attention to what we're, what we're talking about. I think the biggest thing that we're hearing is, you think of the legislative session as kind of a, at the beginning, there's just all these ideas. And it's like this big part of the funnel. Now everything is getting kind of narrowed down to what they're really going to do stuff, you know, do the things about and things they're really going to fund. I mean, the big, the big talking down there right now is, again, we talk $17 billion surplus, nearly $12 million of that is one-time money. So that doesn't leave you a whole lot to really work on all the things they're attempting to work on right now. And I think the big takeaway from my time on Wednesday there is just, there's a lot of great ideas, but none of them come with sustainable funding or very few of them come with sustainable funding. You've seen and heard a lot about universal three meals, and that is a wonderful idea that everyone is getting. That there's a short-term solution, but there's not a long-term solution as to how that's going to be funded. It's also tied to compensatory funding, which we currently get revenue for. But if that isn't continued, that's a, that's a loss of revenue to us. And if funding isn't continued after an initial burst of funding, that's another loss to us too because we have to find a way of funding it ourselves. But those are important things to keep paying attention to. There's lots and lots of incredible ideas that are going to support a lot of people, but there's not funding really sustainably to back them. And so that's kind of my takeaway from my two times down there. And there's a lot of talk and, you know, hopefully if you're paying attention to those things too, you're able to connect with our Senator and Representative to say, here's what, here's what we need in Shasago Lakes and keep that drumbeat going. They are, they are representing us on the floor when it's their time to talk to. And I always ask them, maybe they're not on the committee that we need in terms of education, but they do know who is on that committee and they do talk to them. So we need to continue to provide that influence.
Can I just ask you, so in talking to our local legislators, because I was not able to make a thing, but are they in favor of helping with special education cross subsidy?
Yes.
Adding to the basic formula?
Yes.
Equalization for taxpayers? I mean, all of the points, they are, they're in favor of those?
And I put them on the spot. I said, what will you be voting on this? So, you know, because it's important to know. But you, you know, you might not know where they stand on that. I think the big thing that we're hearing with the 5% and the 5% is just a lot of these strings that are attached to funding will end up costing nearly that. And I haven't costed that myself, but I know Robin and I have had conversations. There's members of the Masbo Group, the Business Association, and then also superintendents are saying, we're costing this out. And based upon what we're seeing, that 5% and 9% will be eaten up pretty quickly by some of the mandates that are coming with potential legislation. So the, the other types of funding, levy equalization relief, cross subsidy relief, local optional revenue, if we're able to increase that, if we were to have levy authority to review our levy ourselves, those would all be ways that would probably be more impactful than even the 5% and 5%. If that makes sense. So just some things to think about. And like I said, if you get an opportunity to go down there, it's been a really worthwhile experience. Everyone's able to see each other face-to-face as opposed to these other meetings and stuff. It's been really helpful to get right in there, so.
Thanks for that.
Yeah.
I had a question just on this, the last line item, LOAR RE, REE. What is that? And I don't want to answer a question without, because there's so many categories here.
The local optional revenue, that's a revenue stream that was created several years ago. And Robin probably has more background on that. But that's basically, they, they took $300 per pupil unit, added that to a revenue we can, we don't claim each year. Local option, there's, there's a, I believe it's a welfare to increase that.
Because that is a significant difference. And obviously, those two numbers are significant. And then there's levy support across the state on top of that, on top of these.
Well, be your own, our own district's having, right? I mean, people are looking for potentially levy authority just to say, can we, can we renew our 225 without having to go up for a vote? Don't know how far that's going to get. Sure. But that's certainly something to consider. Other things I just had for you was just, you know, good news. We just finished up, it's pretty great, which is good news. We're back, back at it. But our winter activities, if you paid attention, there's some really strong finishes there at the end. We have the champion diver. We asked the students now that are going to the National Business Professionals of America event. You know, the just really, there's teams that did well, individuals that did well. And so, I don't know, it's always fun to see what the students can accomplish, right? And that's why we're here. And I think that's always a highlight for us is all this work we do and all the things behind the scenes that happen. Hopefully, they're setting the stage for students to create outcomes, whether it's students for Student Act, athletes for activities. But you know how busy our students are. And they really had a great finish to that winter sports season. Last thing I have for you is, we do have our new Director of HR, Human Resources here, Mr. Corey Beffer. I'm going to ask him to step up and just introduce himself to you if you haven't met him already. Corey started on Monday. We've been filling his head full of all kinds of things. He keeps showing back up every year.
Your members of board. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve, that's just on Lake's district. Truly honor just to serve the HR function out for department with all he gets on how we can, as for the district, and sometimes make difficult decisions, but still be able to move forward. So excited to join the team and get to know all of you a little bit further. So thank you.
We're glad you're here, Corey.
Members of the district.
Welcome. Let us know if we can help you in some way.
Really, thank you.
And then the last thing I had written down in the meeting, Corey, you're going to be here tonight, but we do have our Wildcat Award of Excellence received that will be honored at a banquet next Thursday at the Uncommon's in New York County. So I'll leave it to you to tell me their names.
And of course, all of us as board members are invited to go attend that just to honor these excellent employees. So we have Matt Combe, tell me if I mispronounce these. Avery Bird, Marissa Nielsen, Amanda Omen, Kelsey Voight, Danielle Danielson, Mary Grope, Shannon Plank, Erin Lozick, Chris Brown, Angie Eya.
Vielen.
Vielen, Arlene Abel, John Fletcher, Andrea Raystrom, and Mike Coon. So it's always a fun night to kind of honor. We have so many excellent employees, but hope you can make it. And congratulations to those people who are listening. All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. So this includes the coins and accounts, the minutes, and some personnel items. So eventually, I'll need a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second. We have a motion in a second. Are there any questions about the consent agenda? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Consent agenda passes. We're moving on to old business, of which I see none. So we're moving on to new business. And the first thing we have is the American Indian resolution. Is anyone going to speak to that tonight?
We provided background for you and Director of Teaching and Learning, Sturridge Smith, provided just a little bit more of, kind of hears what's in our 2022-23 plan and some specific things that we do with that. I, I can't speak to it any further than that, other than that. This resolution is one that supports the work that we do there.
So we will need a motion in a second. And because it's a resolution, I think we'll go ahead and do a roll call because that's been our practice. Only a motion in a second first to accept the American Indian resolution.
A motion. A second.
I need a motion in a second. Any questions about this? All right, we go ahead and do a roll call, boys.
Brenda, aye.
Josh, aye.
Jen, aye.
Lori, aye. Jeff, aye.
Lori, aye. Motion carries.
How do you spell aye? Up there, pirate of fame. More than a pirate's eye. We just need a little levity of that.
I just steer it.
I usually do that too.
Okay, we're going to move on to another position. And this one is the non-renewing of tier-one teachers.
We have budgets.
Wait, oh, budget, I just, Robin, man, you're at the podium.
I would just skip right all over that.
Well, I.
Robin, I apologize.
It's okay. It's your turn. And I know you've, you've probably heard it enough, but.
Yeah.
And, but thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I am bringing to you tonight our first look at the budget adjustments for 2024. So what is happening? In the fall, as you know, I propose a budget timeline to the school board and to the administrative team. That timeline starts with looking at enrollment projections in October for the next school year. From there, we build out our assumptions. And from there, we'll look at those on the, on the, one of the next upcoming slides. So using those assumptions, we create a minimum adjustment target of $780,000. And that's what you're going to see here for 2024. So those assumptions and the adjustments that have been discussed with the Finance Committee of the Board, the Administrative Team, that are mostly lined up right here in this nice long line in the back, and now the full board. The administration is requesting that the board accept $899,825 in adjustments. Having many unfilled positions and our ability to co-staff expenses to access this year and next year is generating additional savings for us. But what is access? I just want to give a little background on access here. It's alternative delivery of specialized instructional services, which is another funding source that we can generate reimbursement on salaries for staff. It's not a new funding source for us, but we are able to maximize it next year at $1.3 million. And so why are we proposing adjustments? Why are we proposing these adjustments? We failed a fall 2022 levy. We are approximately $4 million less than state average with our annual revenue. Expenses are going up in all areas. And our, our federal COVID or CARES funding, whatever you want to call it, will be exhausted by June 30 of 2023. What are our budget assumptions? These are assumptions that were, well, since it's a funding year, when we talked about budget assumptions, we have many unknowns. And so these are the assumptions that the Finance Committee chose. We brought probably four different assumptions. We chose enrollment of 3,327 students, a 3% increase in general education revenue, 2% in special education revenue. Our compensatory revenue, which Dean touched on a little bit before, this is unknown for next year. We are receiving $530,000. Our federal grants, our reduction, this is known. It's a reduction of $1.6 million. That is the COVID or the CARES money. And then more unknowns are the increase in expenditures. Those were the assumptions we made there on salaries, insurance, medical insurance, dental insurance, and supplies and utilities. So what's the work that we have completed? The work that we've completed so far? The minimum target was set, and this was done in order to keep that $2 million balance that we had as of 2022. Our administration proposed a list of adjustments. And I just have to note how impressed I was and how efficiently that happened. I give kudos to all of you guys for that. You did a great job on that. Our school board, our Finance Committee first previewed that list. And now the full board is reviewing that list as well. Next Monday, the full board, we know the full board will take action on that and finalize that list at the, at the Monday 3/20 school board meeting. This is the, these are the numbers that we came up with for cost savings. This is just a summary of them. So what do those look like on each, in each building? This is mean for each building. So district-wide, we went three months without a receptionist in our district office, with savings of $9,500. We went seven weeks without an H R director for $17,000. Woo! Seven weeks. We saved $5,000 on full-time substitutes. And we had a tele-speech contract. We're calling that a district-wide thing, and we're going to have about $40,000 savings there, hiring a, our own employee next year instead of having a contract for a net savings of $71,500. And if anyone needs to chime in on any of your buildings, feel free to. If I say something wrong, please correct me. At the primary school, our adjustment there, we are looking at a reduction in one section of kindergarten, just with lower numbers, even though I know they are coming up, baby, keep, keep them coming. Love that, so that's a reduction there, with a specialist to go along with that as well. This is something you're going to see through at least our elementary schools, the facilitators, the tele-psych and tele-speech facilitators, where a reduction in each of our elementary schools there, the facilitator positions. And that's a $44,000 savings there at the primary school for next year. We have some access savings of paraprofessionals there and a .5 social worker position. And we have some add-backs at the primary school. And based on case loads, we're adding back a .5. Early childhood special education teacher and some reading and math paraprofessionals and some behavior paraprofessionals to backfill that mental health part of what's needed there at the primary school. So our net savings there is $169,425. Taylor's Falls Elementary, our adjustments there. We had, we also have quite a few positions that were not filled this year, and we're coming, all those savings as well. We had some paraprofessionals savings and some long-term sub savings on a teacher that resigned partway through the years. And we, through the year, we filled with a long-term sub. There you see that tele-speech facilitator position, a setting-three position, or setting-three. Harold, Jason, can you help me with that? I'm, I struggled with that today, coming up with a good explanation on that again.
Sure, it's a paraprofessional that served in our setting-three program for students with intensive behavioral needs. And we had a student, a couple of students actually moved away at the same time that individual applied for a different position that was located. So we chose that and built that position.
Thank you. As I was writing my notes, I'm like, that one, I just blanked out. So thank you very much for that. And then the other side of the .5 social worker there, and you'll see add-backs on the bottom there in the behavior interventions, they can get there on the mental health. And an increase to some paratime there was a net savings of $175,910. Our Lakeside Elementary, some FY23 savings there in behavior support teacher not filled and some paraprofessional positions. Again, the tele-speech facilitator you see again, and then the tele-speech contract. We actually have the contract that we turned partway through the year this year. So there's savings there at Lakeside Elementary as well. So a savings of $112,000 at Lakeside. At the middle school, pretty big chunk of some paraprofessional positions not filled at the middle school this year. And then a social worker position, reduction, and then an add-back of a social, or of a school counselor. And that'll actually be some access savings there too, with a net savings there of $168,990. At our high school, some FY23 savings of positions not filled and certified positions and uncerti, or non-certified positions, not certified. And then some access savings as well, with a total net savings of $202,000.
Sorry, Robin, one question.
Yep.
On the last slide, so for example, when we're going to be hiring a school counselor at the middle school, that's the difference, that amount of what the access grant will cover a portion, and that's the difference that we have to cover.
Yep. Yep, because access pays for, that's just our cost benefits. Yeah.
Right, thank you.
Yep, good question. So then again, we're just showing the, just showing the, once again, the total list of what are total savings in our adjustments of that $899,825. I know I talk fast. I know a lot of you have heard this quite a few times, so I didn't want to belabor a whole bunch of it. But if there's any questions, yes, please.
The access grant, is that a one, one-year at a time grant?
Yes.
Is that a continuing?
It continues, but it is, it's, actually, we do two, you're right. We write for two years, but it's, it's every year.
It's sustainable, you just have to.
Correct. Yep, yep. We've had it for quite a few years. It's just, we just, we max, we maximized it up this year. I think, I think we have 30, I think there's a $30 leeway there. Jen DeFrain and I sat down and we pushed it to the very limit.
Well, I, I guess I would speak and say thank you to the admin team and business office team coming up with a solution to make that work, so.
Yep, we had some pretty creative minds, and I think we, I think we all did our best.
I heard what you see in rationale would be. We went through that with you, you know, in front of the rationale was this is a sustainable funding source. It's something we know that we can come on, and that's a really big benefit. I think the other thing, so that's one theme of the overall adjustments remaining is this access has been a place that really helped us out. The other thing that you noticed was really wasn't helped was unfilled positions. I will create a little caveat with that though, because unfilled positions means students are still being served and work is still being done, but people are working harder to get it done. And that's not just unique to Shasago Lakes, but when I talk to superintendents from across the state, and I'm guessing my admin team would say the same thing with their colleagues, unfilled positions across the state is a pretty, pretty significant theme. And certainly something that's also being addressed at the legislative level of licensing, especially in the certified areas and that type of thing, trying to come up with some solutions to make sure we have people to staff our positions. So, you know, to have that savings or, you know, is, is great, but at the same time, it does come at the expense of people working super hard to make sure students are served well, which they are.
And I just, I had another question about these tele-speech and tele-psych. So we're able to actually hire real people who aren't going to be in person again instead of having to do this remote tele, yeah. Okay, so we are.
There are quite a few times where I want to say woo on all of these.
And I think I've got to meet you too. I mean, that's a good thing. Like, we actually have a, so even though it's a budget cut, it's, it's a change that's good for kids.
Oh, yeah. And sometimes you have to just kind of tie things over for a year until more people come out of the, you know, the college/university system or people relocate to this area or you get those unique circumstances. But we really just have to figure it out for this year. And of course, now with real face-to-face, you know, work, we're definitely excited about that.
So we have them hired.
Oh, good.
Mm-hmm. Perfect. Any other questions?
I would just like to make a statement. Over the years, these have been painful. And, you know, people are affected by this that have worked for us and served our students very well over the years. And this one seems less painful. However, I would say two things, one with what you said, Dean, because we are sure in some of the areas, and you know principals more than any of us around the table, in some of the areas, and you know principals more than any of us around the table, you have a lot of pairs that are doing a lot of extra things, and they're tighter, and they're sometimes stressed out, and they also have other things going on. So I hope we can get to the point where we can find pairs, number one, and that we can help those pairs, and we thank the pairs that are really going and above and beyond, and a constant state for us. And then there are a couple people that are going to not be with us next year that have served us very well under very stressful situations, and I wish nothing but the best for them. I hope, you know, they find jobs quickly and that they're in areas that we have high demand, and yet our students are being served through other avenues, we feel, maybe in a better way, which I think was clarified to us on the board, you know, those students that do have special needs, and I think we're meeting their needs, and I'm confident that we are meeting their needs, and maybe at least more are being met over the years, and we certainly are sensitive to those people that have lost jobs in this cut reductions.
So unless any other questions, this is the list for you to review, and you can certainly from now until Monday, you know, reach out to Robyn or I if you have questions, or anything specifically to this. But otherwise, the action Monday evening would accept this list of adjustments on behalf of the FY24 budget to entertain more. Tonight is just a media waiting for Monday. The other thing we do want to do, and I asked Sarah and the admin team if they were going to do this, but I think it's important for you to understand what do we provide for mental health supports across the district. We have a brief just summary of what happens across the district in terms of supporting students' mental health, and also staff mental health is a part of what we focus on as well. Actually, a wellness survey went out to staff today from our director of food service at ours here, who works with our wellness policy. We continue to gather information about how we can help all of our staff navigate these times as well. So Sarah's got, you know, again, we're not going to get into all the in-depth detail of everything that happened across the district, but I also think part of it is, too, just talking about what is that tech support provided, behavior tech, you know? So I'll let Sarah take it away, and the admin team is here, too, if they want to jump in with anything, but just to give you that overview, so you understand this really important theme that we're hearing across the state, so.
And we're going to talk about the term "mental health," and I think some people think it's the children that are like, it's anxiety, depression, it's like your DSM-type diagnoses that they see therapists for. We also want to just open your eyes to, like, we have a lot of what we call dysregulation with our students' big emotions. Think about it, that little things that become really big in their world, and it impacts them remaining in the classroom, it also impacts the other children being able to learn, and it impacts the teachers. So like, we just want to really open that mental health term, so you understand we're trying to address all of those things, not only in a responsive, but also a preventative way. So we know that if we can help provide some of those supports to our kiddos, hopefully down the road, we're not seeing so many big emotions, big explosions, because behavior is a symptom of something that's going on for a child, and we try to be really in tune to how to support them on that, so. You've probably seen this sort of tiered system in all of our schools, so this looks very similar between our multi-system tiers of support, from behavior to also academics. So the idea behind this is that all of our students get something. So you're going to hear about what we call our Tier One services, and then there's some kids that just need maybe a little more, so they kind of go into what we call Tier Two. And then we've got some kids that it can be fairly intense, and they just need a lot more. And the goal behind this is you kind of like, think of it like 80% as a, you're green, 15%, then you're yellow, about five at the top. So like, think about your population in your building, if we look about services, that's how we kind of try to figure out what do we actually need.
So Sarah, you just go back one, so just maybe, obviously, Tier One is just excellent classroom instruction for every child, right, and try to meet as many as we can. What would be an example of in the yellow?
Yeah, I've got that next up on the slide. That's okay. It's all good. Catch your conversation. So Tier One, when it comes to the social-emotional side of things, as you know, in school systems, rerun by schedules. So every single one of our buildings has something built into it where students receive what we call Tier One social-emotional support. So the high school, they call it PAWS. At the middle school, it's their flex time. Lakeside, we call it class connect time. It's morning meeting at our other elementaries. But what we do during that time is it's very specific social-emotional learning skills for the kids. So I took an example for you, this was back in December. So for example, at Lakeside, we were working in one of the curriculums called Second Step, and we were working on empathy and kindness, very important skill for young children. At our high school and middle school, they were talking about some mental health tips, and they were also talking about managing intense behaviors, and you will see two things on there. One is be good people, and the other one is Second Step. We're a school, we like curriculums, those are the basis of what we use. The teachers will also have the opportunity to bring other things in, like the middle school does a lot with goal setting, the secondary and the high school do things with transition. So we use that time also to support our kids in that need, but it is based upon that Tier One, so all kids get this. It's built into their schedule on a daily basis. Tier Two, which is next, so this is at the elementary level, so all three elementaries have things like this going on. There's weekly group and individual sessions. Most of our kiddos start off with one session, 20 minutes, once a week. That usually works for most of them. They work on a variety of skills. Sometimes it's friendship skills, sometimes there's whole things going on, sometimes it's managing anxiety, you know, we have kids that have a struggle to coming to school at times. We identify them based upon what their needs are, and we have curriculums and programs that can help support them in those areas. It's that data that we use to figure out what does the kiddo need, and we also do progress monitoring, like, is what we're doing actually working? We do a ton of check-ins with our kiddos, and at the elementary level, who doesn't love a good chart, right? So we do charts on thumbs up, we do charts on dinosaurs, we do charts on just about anything, but it's really child-specific. So we have some kiddos that like struggle during certain parts of the day, they have charts to help support that, they do a lot of breaks, you hear a lot about sensory needs for us. All of those things happen at the elementary level, and the people that help support that, you're going to hear a term called behavior techs. So think of those as paraprofessionals highly trained in the area of social-emotional support. They are supervised by, like, our school psychologists, they're supervised by our school counselors, those licensed mental health practitioners, but these people really allow us to provide five days a week support for these kiddos. So I just did a little math this morning, or this afternoon. At Lakeside, we have two of them, and just for example, on a daily basis, each one of them sees 15 to 18 kids in a session, plus check-ins, plus all the running around and seeing how things are going during the day. You multiply that out, each one of them sees 75 to 90 kids a week. That really allows us to hit that Tier Two, that yellow section of our needs, and it's five days a week, it's consistent. And I think that's one of the things that I think the three elementary principals have really been struggling with is Johnny might have a huge blow-up on Wednesday, but the counselor isn't here. Somebody else has to deal with Johnny. So we need that five-day-a-week structure, and the level of support and need that these kiddos have, a lot of what we try to do is prevention. So if we know that Johnny's got some like big emotions around a certain time of day, we try to provide programming for the kiddo like that, so that they don't disrupt the classroom, they don't disrupt the teacher, and they don't interrupt their home learning. You will also see that each one of our buildings has a full-time school site, we've had those for years, and then also in there, the plan is for the high school and Lakeside to share a school counselor. So that would encompass what like the Tier Two programming looks like at the elementaries. Can I answer any questions before I go to the second? Tier Two at the secondary, you're going to hear a program called Check and Connect. At the secondary level, you're going to see a lot more kids that struggle with work completion, being organized, just that whole like being a student around school, so Check and Connect will do a lot of that. They also do weekly groups and individual sessions, tons of check-ins, and we continue with breaks. Sometimes the kiddos and all of us just need a little bit of a pause point and just kind of regroup before we go back to class. Staffing-wise, you're going to see that we're going to continue with three high school counselors. They will have an additional counselor that's at the high school three days a week and two days a week at Lakeside, and then a Check and Connect staff. The middle school is moving to a two-counselor model next year, so again, that mental health position was eliminated, but they're bringing back a licensed school counselor, and they're going to continue with Check and Connect. That's what Tier Two programming looks like across the district. Tier Three, think of this as your gen ed kiddos and then your sped kiddos. So your gen ed kids, oftentimes those are kiddos that are going to need social skills instruction two times a week, so instead of once, it's twice. We do additional check-ins, sometimes it's at the elementary after recess seems to be a really hot time when issues have happened. Sometimes we put check-ins like during that time. Additional breaks during the day, increasing charts and rewards, and then oftentimes we do have to move our kiddos to behavior plans. So they just need a plan that outlines how to work best with that child, so any adult that works with them knows the best way to work with that kid. That's gen ed. We also have a sped side, which obviously those are our students that are on IEPs. When we get to some more intense behaviors, we're going to hear things called FBAs, it's Functional Behavior Assessment, it gives us a direction of what we need to do to support that kid, and then the plan that comes after that FBA is called the VSP, it's a Behavior Support Plan. So again, that's just a really tight document that any staff member that works with that kid, we're able to support them. And then oftentimes, those kids do need more social skills support. Like, we've got some special education kids that have intense behavior support, mental health support, every single day. That's the tiered system that we have. Can I answer any questions for you? Corey?
Was that your later level three, is that considered Tier Three?
So Level Three that Jason runs is like a federal setting, so like if our kids need like a separate school within a school, that's what they're talking about. The Tier Three on that triangle doesn't necessarily have to be a special education student.
Jason, does your Level Three federal setting takes, I should know this, but do they take students from across the district or just in your area?
Well, up until basically now, we did accept students from all of the elementaries in Shasago Lakes. However, we were not able to hire a new setting-three teacher. We had a resignation around the first of the year. So we have restructured that across the district where we're going to be doing what's kind of like a pop-up program, so as we have students that need that level of support, kind of a program within a school, we're all going to do that individually at our sites rather than having them come out to us, because we weren't able to hire a staff member two from that. And instead of trying to hire a setting-three DVD teacher to be the leader of that program, right now, we have just a general special ed teacher posted with really any license we're willing to accept, because special ed teachers are so difficult to find right now.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up. I was going to ask, Jason, would you mind just walking the board through the levels, Level One, Two, Three, Four, Five?
Sure. So what it really means is it's based on the number of minutes in a child's day that they spend with non-disabled peers. And so like a federal setting one means that they're spending, I think it's 60% of their day, and then as you go up to different levels, basically, Level Two is even more intensive, where they're basically how much are they pulled out. The federal setting three means that pretty much all of their day is in a special ed setting, but they're still physically located within a community school. Federal setting four is our Pathway to Change program in our SOAR program, where it's 100% of their day is with students with disabilities, but they're off-site.
So that's the special ed side of things?
Yep, that's just students on.
Just do something. Yep.
Yeah, and then the multi-tiered systems of awards that, you know, Sarah just took you through, that's the Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three, the triangle, so lots of, as you're finding out, especially new board members, lots of acronyms, lots of different things to keep in mind when it comes to education.
The other thing that we have is additional supports. So we have TSA, Therapeutic Service Agency. I don't know if you are all aware of this, but like, for example, at Lakeside, we have 2.0, it's three people that equal 2.0 FTE, full-time therapists in the building. So they're like co-located services. These are parents that sign their child up for counseling services, the parent goes through their insurance, it's like that TSA employee is located in our schools, and we all have them. They are full. We're an elementary school, and we're on a waitlist. So I know at the middle school, high school, are we all on waitlists? We're all on waitlists to get kids in. So we feel like that's a huge benefit to our kids and families, that we have those co-located services right here. We also work with TSA, and they have a day treatment program up in North Branch, so we have multiple students throughout the year in all of our buildings that we transition back and forth during the day. So those kids are with us part of the day and then a day treatment part of the day. And then.
Sarah, would day treatment be a Level Five? Or Level Four?
Day treatment is like, it's considered a medical, so it's nothing to do with like a part of our federal settings with special ed or anything like that.
Some of the kids that attend day treatment are not on.
Right. Yep. And then the chemical dependency in counseling programs, I know, like, talking with both Todd and Sammy, like, kids kind of come in and going in and out of our schools and making sure that those kids get those right level services so they can access their education, and those that get are all off-site, those are kids that sometimes have to withdraw from our schools, get that treatment, and then hopefully come back to us.
Are those funded through use by the parents' insurance?
TSA?
Yeah.
Yes.
And can we get more, or is there a cap, or?
Well, I keep asking for more, Jeff, so they have a hard time finding staff, too. So, I mean, I think, did you, we just, you just got one? Yeah. It's mental health services, you guys, so I mean, you know, if you pick up the phone and try to call your insurance and find out where to get into a counselor, like, it's a waitlist, it's hard to get into them. The benefit to having the TSA therapist in our buildings is just that relationship with them. I mean, Kathy's been with us for a few years, but it's all through the parents' insurance.
What is their degree, or what is their training?
Yeah, so when you move into that side of like the, what they call the medical side of mental health like that, there's different licensure requirements, and they all are related to how you can bill through insurance. So I can't remember what Kathy, she's got like a, she's got a psych background, and then she's got certificates in some areas, sometimes they're licensed social workers with different certificates. And we've got an intern with us right now who's phenomenal, but she can only take so many because she's not fully licensed and they can't fully bill for her. So it's this, you know, constant insurance battle that we have when we're doing things like this, but we feel very fortunate that they're a part of our schools.
Looks like it's also marriage and family therapists, like, that's what our first licensure is in, or a licensed practicing counselor, or a licensed social worker. It's kind of a variety of licenses that it's all tied back to how they can bill based on a specific license area.
So they're in our buildings every day, they come to staff meetings, they sometimes have lunch, the kids see them, and we create schedules for our kids to be able to leave their academic day and receive counseling services, usually about once a week. And then one more question. Again, these are just the changes that are happening. At the high school in Lakeside, we don't have any programming changes with our staffing model or anything like that. TFN Primary are moving away from a social worker position that they share to behavior techs, where they're in their building five days a week. And then the middle school is moving from a mental health specialist to adding a second school counselor, so that was two-school counselor model.
Yeah, so our goal for you, just to just give you that broad background, I mean, as you're interacting with the community, as you're sort of the networks that you're, I mean, people are talking about mental health wherever you go, probably, and so you have at least a general idea of here's what our schools do. I mean, it's really important, obviously, to, you know, tie things back to our principals and our leads and our admin, who know exactly what's going on in their buildings, but, you know, hopefully it helps to answer some questions in terms of do we have a broad base of programming and opportunities for kids to receive support? We absolutely do, and our staff do a great job with that, and really just wanted you to have the overview, so thank you, admin team, for that, Sarah, for providing, and of course, we can take more questions here.
Yeah, I just had a question. How can we, as community members, parents, these people in this community, support you guys and what you're doing when it comes to mental health? Like, what are some, what are some things we can do?
I have some totally loaded question. Sorry. It's a great question. I think, you know, oftentimes, some of our kiddos that need it the most, they have just a lot going on in their houses right now, so I will definitely share with you that like our family structure seems stressed right now. So it's one more huge benefit that that child can receive counseling like right in the building. So I mean, you know, supporting what TSA does, supporting those co-located services are really, really important. I think the other thing that like we work a lot is like, we're not afraid to talk about mental health, like, to kind of de-stigmatize it, like, if your kid's having a hard time, that's okay, we can help with that. It doesn't need to be this huge blow-up of a thing, like, we help in lots of different ways, and I think the more we talk about it, and the more we make it okay, the more we're going to be able to just kind of work through this together. We just have still some parents that are resistant to it because it's a stigma attached to it. We're like, we just want to help your kid.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I think from a community's, you know, from a standpoint, if you're speaking with somebody whose child's having some mental health concerns, just helping them overcome that stigma and encouraging them to get some help, encouraging them to reach out to us if we're not already working with the family to try to connect them with resources in the community and in our schools, which we have a lot of, thankfully, right now, but the needs are very great and welcome.
We have awesome staff that are working on this, though, you guys. Like, you talk about some pretty amazing individuals, those group, the staff that are listed there, those are some incredible individuals, and we're thankful for that.
And I have to say, being at the primary school for a while, just being able to see families, be able to go into that counselor's office right in the building that they're comfortable with, the kids are comfortable there, they don't have to drive to the cities to try to see a counselor, if they don't know what a place that they don't know, like, right in our school, they can access a counselor. It just seems like such a win-win situation if we can keep that going.
And if we can address some of the emotional needs, like the dysregulation that we're seeing, if we can give kids some better skills and strategies when they're younger, we just hope that that carries itself into the middle and high school. So it really is those preventative practices that we're trying to do with the kids, like, how do you, you know, how do you control your breathing when you're upset, or how do you know when you're upset? Sometimes our kiddos are so young, they don't even know. So those are all things that fall under that big, broad category of mental health.
And then our staff are able to access those in-house counselors as well. Like I was trying to get a staff piece of this. It's been sort of a stressful time for a lot of people. So I was curious if there was a connection next.
They typically will not see them for like counseling sessions. Did you know what I mean? Like those are reserved for the kids. Yeah. But TSA does have a wide variety of services. Like somebody could access TSA outside of school, but the therapists that are here are here to work with kids. But they are a great resource though with just like managing stress and like how can they help the teachers manage what's going on in the classroom? That's usually a huge help. We've had a lot of questions about like, how do you help with the kid that's struggling with trauma? And like how that does to that child in the classroom? They've had great ideas about just some of the little things that we can change in that kid's day that make a big difference and kind of just smooth things out. That reduces all of our stress.
Cause I do see teachers and talking to them and I was just curious probably getting some help with some of those classroom things for some of those kids.
Yeah.
I think in addition to that, you know, school psychologists do receive some training in how to support staff as well. And so each of us having a full-time psych in our building, I think they are available to the staff. And you know, it's not necessarily your appointment is at three and we're kind of doing therapy on the couch sort of a thing like Simon Freud. But it is a, you know, I think it is a, they do have that training and supporting staff guiding people in the right direction.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay. So now are we ready to move on? Now we're moving on to the resolution for non-renewal tier one teachers. And so I think Dean provided some background for new board members. But again, tier one teachers are teachers that are not on a typical teaching license. They're hired for one year and they're not in a continuing contract. So every year we have to release them and then they would have to reapply for those positions. But first we have to try to get sort of the teachers in those positions. So this is not an unusual thing. Every year we have to non-renew our tier one teachers. Does anyone have other questions? Okay. So this is a resolution. So we'll take a motion to approve this resolution.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the resolution for non-renewal tier one teachers.
Will we just second it?
I will second it.
And we'll do a roll call vote for this as well.
Brenda, aye.
Josh, aye.
Jen, aye.
Cory, aye.
Jeff, aye.
Lori, aye.
Okay, we have a second resolution. And this time it's the nominal of probationary teachers. First three years in the teacher's career of probationary periods. So these are people that when they're not renewed, they're in that probationary period.
As I shared yesterday, probably of all of these are teachers who are building one-year leave of absence as well. So that, that first on that leave of absence will be returned. So this person will not have that position.
So we'll need a motion in a second for the resolution of non-renewal probationary teachers. Second.
I'll second it.
And we will take a roll call vote for this one as well.
Brenda, aye.
Josh, aye.
Jen, aye.
Cory, aye.
Jeff, aye.
Lori, aye. The resolution passes.
And then we have a layoff resolution for local 284. I don't know if we need extra explanation.
But you know, some information yesterday, this is where you saw the adjustment list. There was speaking of the tele, psych and tele speech assistants, you know, like we're helping with that facilitators. So these are those positions.
So we need a motion in a second for this. Local 284.
A motion. I'll second it.
We'll do a resolution again for.
Brenda, aye.
Josh, aye.
Jen, aye.
Cory, aye.
Jeff, aye.
Lori, aye. The resolution passes.
Our next resolution is relating to the termination and non-renewal of teaching contracts for long-term substitute teachers. And again, this is common practice, right? So for anyone who's been a long-term sub for us, we need to, we need to non-renew that as well.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the resolution for long-term substitutes.
I'll second it.
And Brenda?
Brenda, aye.
Josh, aye.
Jen, aye.
Cory, aye.
Jeff, aye.
Lori, aye. The resolution passes. Thanks for that.
So we're going to move on to student worker pay changes. Robin, are you going to speak to this?
Yes. Yes. I can remember I sent a, an email to the finance committee a while back, kind of an emergency email requesting an increase to our student workers. We were in need of some workers. We weren't able to hire any because we were at such a low rate. I think our rate was like $8 and $300 or something. So we usually do this increase in the summer on our miscellaneous wage sheet. We weren't able to hire any, so we requested this. But, and so the finance committee temporarily approved that, but we need to bring it back to the full board to increase that wage to $14 an hour. That was what we're requesting to be able to hire our student wages. And the reason we came up with that, speaking with our director of community education, he was looking at what could, what could these students be hired to McDonald's? And it was 1368. So we're like, okay, can, how do we compete with McDonald's? Can we hire them at $14 an hour? So that's how we came up with that. We will bring this back in the summer and with our miscellaneous wage sheet and get some of those other wages in there. But that's what we're requesting to have the board approve us to recruit that wage add. I still move that.
I'll second it. But a motion in a second. Any questions about that? Thank you. I appreciate it.
I guess the only other question I want to have is do we have any staff that we currently have that are paid less than us?
This is community ed and it's in his budget is what, where this can conspire from.
Do we have any?
Not staff.
Strength in law on miscellaneous wage sheet. I don't believe so.
It wasn't miscellaneous wage sheets.
Well, I think there were pairs under the old.
Under the old contract, yes.
But I don't think there are under the new contract.
No, the starting wage is higher than that.
That's a good question.
Yep, those are very good.
If I have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. Motion passes. All right, then we had a tentative agreement to look at the local 284. And Jeff had been a part of the committee from the inception. And then two of our outgoing board members were on the committee. And Brenda and I joined very ready process to come to an agreement on this. But were there any questions on the tentative agreement of local 284?
I think one thing you pointed out was just, you know, that just was mentioned, you know, what was the hourly rate here? And I think you should go all the way to the last page or so and look at whether starting wages are at like schedule A. I think wherever that lines up in there, I want to say it's obviously it's quite small, but I think.
Maybe 16.
Yeah. 10 is the lowest.
I think I've looked that up today as we were going through. Trying to get ready to change the wages and do retro, we've been working on that. So I believe that schedule A is 16.
Yeah, that's been a conversation, you know, everywhere, you know, how we would raise, you know, pay for all of our workers and in a way that we can afford, right? So yeah, 16, 10 is the lowest one on the, on the salary grid. And again, we would certainly, on behalf of all our employees, want to continue to increase that as we have revenue to support it. So those that worked hard on that, Jeff was a part of that, that negotiations from the start. And that was definitely the, the conversation. And I think we knocked out how many steps and lanes, you know, to get us there, you know? So overall.
Those first six steps.
Yeah, those first six steps were there.
Three steps on B, C and D.
Anything else about that?
A motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. We have a motion in a second. Any more questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, let's continue later.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. John, don't take it personally if people are leaving. We're moving to the points in the meeting where we're going to discuss candidates for superintendent. And John Ward is here from the Minnesota School Board Association. And John has been to sort of walk us through the process.
Yep. It's an exciting night, I think. At least it typically is. Before I get started in there, I sent you a confidential document today. Does anybody need a hard copy of that as we go through your discussion? I'd want to collect them while we're talking.
I would take it in front of me, just in front of me if you don't mind. If you have.
Yeah, I think I made enough copies. Are we good?
John, are these names, do I need to include them in the minutes?
No. The only ones you'll include in the minutes is that once the motion is made, I'll say. If we're ready to use, then I will announce who those are and they're in the public. Anybody else that isn't half standard, either stays confidential.
Okay. And I take that.
So as I said, it's confidential until you make the motion of who you want to bring in for the first round interviews next week.
That'll make tonight.
Yeah. And so as we, we will get the training meeting. You'll address by letter the alphabet and avoid pronouns. It's not always easy to do, but do that. Avoid specific meanings to maybe where they work. So appropriate deliberations would be, I really like that they have principal experience. And that's, there's a lot of people that have principal experience. But if you mention anything more specific, you run the risk of giving up their data because somebody could Google that and find out. So we're going to start and bear with me. The presentation forms, you have seen a lot of this information. You wouldn't have heard somebody reference references. But there's eight that I'm reading tonight. So just bear with me because this will take a little bit of time. And they're in no particular order. I happen to bear in mind particular order. So one of them thinks that there's a ranking system here. So MSBA recommends that the Chicago Lake School District consider hearing candidate A for the position of superintendent of schools for the 23, 24 school year. Their experience as executive director of teaching and learning, principal. Did I hear something?
No, you're right.
Losing my mind. Assistant principal, curriculum coordinator and a teacher. Their current licenses are as a superintendent, principal and teacher. Education and a specialist in educational leadership, masters in educational leadership and bachelor of science. The reason for the interest in this position, this comes from candidate. I see Chicago Lake's school district as a destination school district. Place that already has high achievement, excellent teachers and a thriving community. I see a district that has innovative programs like early literacy investment and science reading and career exploration work with high schools career pathways. I also see the opportunity to use my collaborative leadership skills to share this excellence, expand the tradition of high achievement, increase trans, excuse me, increase transparency to all stakeholders. Everyone will celebrate success and become the very best school district to learn, work and grow in the. The reference descriptors, these are things that some of the references use to describe them. Candidate A is described on reference as collaborative, innovative and creative in terms of problem solving. Candidate A is visible, accessible, communicates well and communicates promptly. Candidate empowers people they work with, provides resources and supports when needed. Candidate A trusts the leaders in the organization that make decisions. Candidate A is energetic, passionate, hopeful, innovative and relational. Candidate A is a relationship builder with a real interest in people. Our recommendation, MSBA is candidate A is an experienced administrator with proven success as a school leader. They have successfully led the process of reorganizing the teaching and learning department in their district. Candidate A has recently oversaw the process with staff selection team. We recommend a new mathematics curriculum for the district and the school board to consider. Candidate A has the ability to create an environment that is highly productive. Finally, candidate A is viewed as a collaborative leader who models a drive for continuous improvement in their own work, which is others to revisit and improve processes. So candidate A meets the hiring criteria that you established, which I'll probably remind you of before we get into deliberations and has acknowledged a desire to interview if the superintendent position is called by the district. MSB recommends Chicago Lake's school district considering being candidate D for the position of superintendent of schools for the 23, 24 school year. Their experience as a superintendent and assistant superintendent, a principal and assistant principal and a teacher. Current license held, they're a superintendent and principal. Education is a doctorate in educational leadership, specialist in educational leadership and a bachelor of science. Candidate's reasons for interest in this position. While serving as a superintendent, I became familiar with Chicago Lake School as I had collaborative opportunities to work with the district. My three years of experience working in a larger district, that may be a perfect candidate for this position. In addition, I have committed and ready to be the face of the district through many collaborative opportunities to connect with students, staff, community and others. My previous successes as a superintendent and assistant superintendent set me up to listen, learn, assist, lead and contribute uniquely to Chicago Lake Schools and its school board and anticipate the opportunities to discuss the possibilities. Reference descriptors. Candidate D has been described by references as charismatic, relationship orientated, collegial, a problem solver, trustworthy, equity focused and someone who has passion for working with people. References stated D exudes positive energy, is a collaborative leader, has a unique ability to build positive relationships with all stakeholders. An SBA recommendation, candidate D has successful experience as a superintendent and a district level administrator. D has successfully led a random election campaign and is viewed as honest ethical leader. Candidate D is widely respected for their natural communication skills and skills and interpersonal skills with all stakeholders in the district. Candidate D meets the hiring criteria established by the school board and has acknowledged desire to interview for the superintendent position called by the district. I need water. Reading out loud is kind of a lost art. I mean, it's, I just realize I told you. MSBA recommends the Chicago, it's just Chicago. Chicago Lake School District considering being candidate F for the position of superintendent of schools for the 23, 24 school year. Experience superintendent, principal, assistant principal and a teacher. Current license superintendent, principal and teacher. Education is a specialist in educational leadership, masters in educational administration and a bachelor of arts. Candidate's reasons for interest in the position. Chicago Lake School District has a great story to tell. It's one of success, community support, people coming together to prepare students to have unlimited opportunities in whatever path they choose. Those attributes draw me back to an area that I know very well, love and want to be a part of. I'm excited about the possibilities of building upon the foundation of success through collaboration, connecting and building relationships with staff, students, families and stakeholders. Being present and active in the communities and fulfilling the promise of brighter tomorrow for all. Reference descriptors, candidate F has been described by references as a top-notch educational leader who understands all aspects of educational systems and demonstrates uncountable excellence as an administrator. References view F as trustworthy, a person of the highest integrity, visionary leader and someone who is all-in while maintaining a visibility in the school district second to none. References state F is super talented, super positive and a genuine leader. That has to be a direct quote, does it not? F's leadership is credited with building a cohesive family feeling in their school district. MSBA's recommendation, candidate F is an experienced, highly successful school superintendent who is widely respected for providing successful leadership in their school district. F is a leader who understands value, building positive relationships with all stakeholders in the school district, both internally, externally, and achieves this exceptionally well through active listening and proactive engagement with individuals and groups. Candidate F also meets the hiring criteria established by the board and has acknowledged a desire to interview for the superintendent, superintendent position if called by the district. Hope you'll bear with me.
You're doing great, John.
Thanks. I need that encouragement. Sometimes maybe more the older I get, but anyway. MSBA recommends Chicago Lake School District considering being candidate H for the position of superintendent of schools for the 23, 24 school year. The experience has an assistant superintendent, a principal, assistant principal and a teacher. Current license held, they're a superintendent, principal and a doctorate in educational leadership, specialist in educational leadership and bachelor of science. Reasons for interest is evident that the communities that are part of the Chicago Lake School District understand and appreciate the importance of the thriving school district to the overall health of the community. As I read the points prior to mine in the district brochure, I felt an immediate connection with the vision of the district and my personal mission as a leader. Appreciate the district vision of inspiring all capital students and alliance directed with my desire to collaborate with the community and school district in a way that strengthens communities, prepares all students to succeed. I believe my skill set could help Chicago Lake to move to the next level for our kids, staff, families and community. Reference descriptors. Candidate H has been described by references as a real people person who is visionary, authentic, honest and possessing high integrity. References state that candidate H will question and support and ensure that implementation of district initiatives is done together. H is a collaborative leader who shines brightest during difficult times. MSBA's recommendation, candidate A has successful experience at the district level. H played a major role in the successful referendum election campaign and is viewed as someone who inspires those around them to be their very best for student. H has been tasked to handle a wide variety of issues and has always emerged with the issue handled successfully in a respected and collaborative manner. Candidate H is widely respected for their leadership and character and will be sorely missed by those who know him. Candidate H meets the criteria, hiring criteria established by the school board of Chicago Lake and acknowledges a desire to interview for the superintendent position if called by the district. Told you it's hard. MSBA recommends Chicago Lake, I didn't have a real hard time.
With Chicago.
I feel like I'm slurring it. Because I was Sean Connery, I thought you got it right. But anyway, Chicago Lake School District consider hearing being candidate I for the position of superintendent of schools for the 23, 24 school year. Their experience, executive director of teaching and learning, principal, assistant principal, the dean of students and the teacher. They go and license as a superintendent, principal and teacher. Education, they have specialist in educational leadership, master of arts, bachelor of science and a bachelor of arts. Their reasons for their interest. My highest educational goal is parallel, parallel to Chicago Lake Schools district mission statement. My highest educational goal is parallel to Chicago Lake Schools district mission statement. I believe in this powerful comprehensive goal for all learning, engaging, educating, and empowering students to prepare for lifelong learning. In addition, productive, innovative, and creative problem solvers who think independently are valuable in a global society. This can make a positive difference in student lives and the world. We must teach content in conjunction with teaching how to think, teaching students how to think critically and creatively in an environment that respects differences. I also believe in nurturing diverse, challenging, and encouraging environment helps all learners succeed at their individual best in academics and life. Reference descriptors. Candidate I has been described by references as positive, articulate, and a good decision-maker. I is very collaborative with students and staff, excuse me, and is an important part of the leadership team and offers great insight. I has had to make difficult decisions, yet ensures that everyone involved understands how they arrived at those decisions. I has always struck me as someone who will be a superintendent. I has been described as having great vision, calming influence, and maintaining consistency, consistently high standards. Our recommendation, MSBA. Candidate I has successful experience at the district level. I has been described as one of the best candidates ever hired by a former supervisor. Candidate I is respected for their communication skills and interpersonal skills with all stakeholders in the school district. I possess this high integrity and is very concerned not only about the students, but about the supporting staff who work closely with those students. Candidate I meets the hiring criteria established by the school board and has acknowledged a desire to interview for the superintendent position called by the district. Need to pause to soak some of that. MSBA recommends the Chicago Lake School District is considering interviewing candidate J for the position of superintendent of schools for the 2324 school year. Experience as interim superintendent, executive director, curriculum director, principal, and assistant principal, and a teacher. Current license, they're superintendent, K-12 principal, and a teacher. They have a master's and a bachelor's of science, bachelor of arts. Candidate's reason for interest in this position. I'm interested in this position because I truly believe in Chicago Lake School District's vision and mission for what a district can and should be for students and the community. My skills and experience with collaborative leadership, fiscal responsibility, communication, transparency, critical development, strategic planning, personnel management, and public relations aligns well with the needs of the district. I believe I can support the district in continuing to foster a school and community that keeps kids at the heart of everything we do. Reference descriptors. Candidate J has been described by references as a very relational and collaborative leader. Candidate J is energetic and very responsive, hardworking, student-centered, tenacious and ethical. They have a caring heart, sense of humor, and are able to build consensus by bringing various factions together. Candidate J has the knowledge and experience of a successful superintendent. Our recommendation. Candidate J is a student-first servant leader, not only have they the skills, but the vision for leading and supporting a school district. They are a dynamic leader, respected by staff and the community, with a head for the work and a heart for the communities they serve. Candidate J is an experienced superintendent and the driving force behind them, the successful passions of two or more approved referendos. Candidate J is highly visible in the communities and involved in organizations that are respectful of differing opinions while helping stakeholders build meaningful conversations and consensus. And again, they meet the criteria established by the board and the desire to interview for the superintendent position called by the district. MSBA recommends the Chicago Lake School District is considering interviewing candidate M for the position of superintendent of schools for the 2324 school year. Experience as a principal, assistant principal, dean of students, and a teacher. Current license, superintendent, K-12 principal, and teacher. Education specialist degree, master's of ed and educational leadership and learning technology, and a bachelor of science. Candidate's reason for the interest. I'm interested in the Chicago Lake superintendent position as it is my passion to lead. This position is very important to the communities the school district serves, teachers, and most importantly, the students. I understand the dedication needed to be visible, transparent, collaborative, and lead through the eyes of the community I serve. Reference descriptors. Candidate M has been described by references as highly ethical, comprehensive systems thinker, with a sense of humor and a strength in character. Our board members, staff, and communities have a lot in common. Have a lot of confidence in their visionary leadership and abilities to move the district toward our goals. Candidate M possesses cultural awareness, sensitivity, equity, and has a balance of thought with compassion for all students and their families. Our recommendation. Candidate M has outstanding personality, knowledge of education, administrative skillset. They are humble yet confident in their abilities to build trust and help others grow and succeed. Their positive attitude is contagious. Candidate M's demeanor and communication style contribute to their success and ability to facilitate meaningful conversations. Candidate M leads by example and will be a helpful partner for the Board of Education as they navigate continued demands of leading the school district. They will help the staff and students improve their practice and enjoy their work. Candidate M has the ability to lead the Chicago Lake School District toward their vision of the future. Candidate M meets the hiring criteria established by the board and has a desire to do the task. MSBA recommends the Chicago Lake School District is considering interviewing candidate O for the position of superintendent of schools for the 2324 school year. Their experience as a superintendent, interim superintendent, principal, and teachers. Current licenses are superintendent, principal, and a teacher. Education, master's in educational administration, and master's of science and bachelor of science. Candidate's reason for interest in this position. It would be an honor for me to serve the Chicago Lake School community for location, size, and talent and personnel of the district's position that dwell to exceed community standards and ensure learning for all. My experience, values, and relationship skills make me an ideal candidate to unite the district, build trust, enhance community pride, and as a team establish Chicago Lake as a regional leader in education. Reference descriptors. References describe candidate O as a person who seeks to build consensus, seeking out opinions, making sure opinions are heard, and willing to change directions based on this feedback. Candidate O is collaborative, decisive, fair, and a flexible leader that holds staff accountable. Candidate O is described as curious, ready to learn, wanting to understand freely to make sure the right decisions can be made. One reference described candidate O as one of the most passionate leaders they have worked with, really wants to do what's best for kids. MSBA's recommendation. Candidate O has excelled in management and governance and has put processes in place that the district has been lacking. Candidate O is trusted and experienced superintendent and had an important role in establishing and supporting multi-tiered systems of support and focus on supporting the needs of all learners. Candidate O also understands the importance of promoting their school by being involved in service organizations, being visible at school activity events. They are a person of high integrity, honesty, and proven selfless service. Candidate O is very personable and approachable by having the ability to put people at ease. Candidate O meets the criteria established by the board and has acknowledged a desire to interview for the superintendent position called. So while I take a breath. A lot of that we knew, but some of that we didn't. And that's coming from the people that we vetted. And you might have known a different style of vetting. As the lead, I get to kind of coalesce this, but we divided it up between six individuals. So we all read a little bit different, and we all looked for a little bit different thing. We also talked to candidates through pre-interview. Generally, you had a very deep pool in our opinion. And you had two nights scheduled, and we put eight letters in front of you with six of our strongest, and then two we thought worthy of consideration. As the board, you can choose to interview as many as you want or as few as you want. I will tell you that there are people that aren't shaded that what we would call were on the bubble. You know, and at some point, we were, we looked at your criteria. We talked it through, we thought about what references said, and tried to match that up to criteria, and then simply got to a point where, given what we know, without bringing 15 to you, you know, we had to make a choice, but there's some, you had a good pool. And that should be, you should be proud of that. So it's time for you to talk about, you know, how many and which letters, and then go from there.
Okay, well, thank you, John. I'm not sure if we want to set a strict number. I think we need to talk about who do we really want to hear from, and we make that number work, unless you have a different opinion. We wouldn't want to eliminate someone because we're strictly going with five and that's it. So let me think about how we want to talk about this.
I can maybe just start off with the eight that were recommended entirely. I didn't see any red flags, or I would support each of those eight. Whatever the board decides on the number, but all eight of those I didn't see.
I don't everybody do it, like I rank them. And it'd be interesting to see if like my top rank matched their, you know, ones you want, and then we can decide.
I mean, I wonder if, sorry, I didn't answer the question. I didn't rank them, I just put ones that I'd be interested in interviewing, and then I compared it to the list you gave them, those kinds of things. I wonder if it would make sense to go one at a time and see if MSBA recommended them, or one at a time, I don't know, and see.
So kind of what you're asking for is somewhat of a tally.
Maybe.
Do you dare do a hard, or not a hard?
Not that we have to stick by the, but we can at least see.
You're asking to be processed, like is that the question?
Yes.
That has been done by many boards to the point where they're non-binding. But if we all submit a ranking that tends to crystallize things, but it's non-binding.
I have no ranking, you have no ranking, but I did list them kind of like.
So if we went one by one, John, and we said how many people would say they'd like to interview them? Could we do it that way?
That's another way to do it, yeah.
Does that make sense to people?
You're keeping, and then I'll try to tally, but I would ask some.
Yes, yes.
That's been done that way too.
We have a clerk.
He's going to be asking for a clerk call.
They're closer to you now.
Okay, any objections to that, or does anyone have a better idea? I'm just trying to think of how can we consider what they're saying, but also what we all felt.
You don't have to rank them, but if you guys put, I mean, five, just, I think that's a good idea.
I liked when we hired Cory, the HR spot. The hiring committee did a similar ranking, but I don't want to rank them because of what John said.
Yes, I would rather.
So a preconceived notion on, you know.
No, I would rather not.
So whether we're interviewing or not. So I can tally either up on the whiteboard or right here so that the entire group can see.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. I'll do this one because it's closer to me.
Will you be going through every candidate because the eighth that MSBA has listed? Well, I guess I was thinking about everyone, just in case there was someone, the majority of the board was thinking about that they didn't.
Basically, you're just asking the question as we go down, me to O.
Who would?
How many of you would want to?
Would want to interview them.
Could we make a generic comment as we do? Which one, if there's comments we make? Following the procedure that you gave us?
Yeah, if it's nondescript, you know, it gets your point across without giving away private data, yeah.
Sure. Particularly if we're going to add someone that they didn't recommend. It might be nice to give like a reason, right? Or if we want to eliminate someone from your list, well, I don't know. Okay, so let's start with candidate A, who's a recommendation from MSBA. Who had listed them as someone that they want to interview? Yeah, me too.
Four, okay.
Okay, letter B. Was there anyone who wanted to interview, letter B?
I had.
Okay. Letter C.
I didn't. I didn't think.
Two, Jen.
I did too. Letter D.
So it's all six?
No, I didn't.
Oh, you did not, okay, fine.
And then I'd like to get reference.
Okay, sure.
And candidate D, at the position that they were a superintendent, there was not one recommendation for their position. That wasn't, that was kind of the main reason.
So what, if I'm hearing you right, what you're saying is you looked at their references, they didn't have a board member.
They didn't have anybody from the school that they worked at.
Can check too.
At the currently at?
No, no, where they were a superintendent.
Oh, where they were a superintendent.
And, you know, it's hard a little bit with some of these because every one of us might have a connection. And I had a connection there, and that stood out for me.
And you know what, I made a mistake. I did have C written, could you add another?
Sure.
I didn't get that wrong. And then, sorry, for the D that we're talking about, I only wrote it down because MSBA had recommended it. It was not in my original list, so please take me off D.
So we're at?
And I'll pay attention.
Four.
Four.
And then I'd like to make just a statement on C. There were many places that they applied or were finalists. And were chosen.
The right number of bridesmaid number, right?
Well, that's just what.
Okay, let's be careful with our quotes.
Well, that's the saying.
There's a lot of sayings we can say right now.
All right, let's keep moving on for now, and then we'll go back and talk about things we need to. We're on to letter E. Okay, doesn't look like anybody. F. Anyone want to interview that?
Five.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Oh, six. I know, it's hard to keep track of all this. We're on to G. Anyone for G? Okay, we're on to H. Five, looks like. I.
Three.
J. Four. K. L. M. Would it be appropriate to ask, so I know some of us felt like it was really important to have superintendent experience. Some people, I think, eliminated or didn't think it was necessary. So was there anybody who just eliminated anyone who didn't have superintendent experience? Or did we all just consider all the qualities? Okay. All right, so are we on N?
Yeah.
Okay, N. Anyone? And then O.
Two with unanimous. Two with supermajority. M, two, three, four with majority.
So.
That's eight. If you comment that a majority of the board can't.
And as we.
Check my math on that.
Robin is checking, you're already moving all over. And as we compare to MSBA's recommendations, it looks like.
C would be an addition. Who would be addition?
C.
C candidate, someone would be an addition. I would not, they would be.
Right. Right. And that's it. So I guess now we can talk about, that gives us eight that had four of us or more that wanted to interview them. Is everyone comfortable with the departures from MSBA's recommendation that we'd be adding C and taking away I? That a problem for anybody?
So who would you take away according to MSBA?
I.
I. And then that would leave us with eight candidates to interview in two nights. We'd need to make sure that seems, John, is there a particular time? Like I think we blocked out five to 10 o'clock just in case both nights.
You don't know how long it'll take you to. You don't know how long it'll take you to deliberate, but you, I think if it's the 20 person's one, one minute, right, at five o'clock, so five, 10 minute break, 15 minute break, so you're, it's gonna get you done late. Then you have to deliberate, so I mean, it's doable, but it's a long night.
I would not be a fan of it, I would like to be five, but I will pay for my eight.
Okay, well, but if they're tied, then it's, you're not gonna have a choice. Unless we talk about the ones that are tied and see if somehow tonight we can eliminate any. I mean, Jen, Josh, Cory, Jeff, how do you feel about eight versus six and do you think?
I, I guess I'm a fan of a bigger pool.
Hi, this is Cory.
You know, a paper interview or a paper application, you might miss some things, you might see other stuff in person during an interview or other part of the process.
I mean, I feel like we're dedicated to doing this well and for me, I don't mind staying, I don't mind putting the hours in and I think it is true that sometimes when you talk to someone in person, it feels different than what you saw on paper and. But, so I'm not opposed to doing eight, but I, I do want to hear from the rest of you too, Josh, do you have an opinion about it?
Well, I was just saying, the question, we have two candidates that are doing.
Initial.
Initial, so we're doing four tonight.
Right.
So realistically, how, how long does it give us for each candidate? An hour is what we recommend with a 10 to 15 minute break, sometimes candidates don't take an hour and often candidates show up early so you can get earlier start and I can call them too and say, we're ahead of schedule. It's still a long night and it's a lot and then you're deliberating, so you won't deliberate on Monday or Tuesday, excuse me, maybe Monday, it's right. And you won't adjourn the meeting, you'll, you'll recess the meeting until the next night and then, then you'll deliberate after, after the last.
After the second night.
Second night. And then you'll have, you know, then you'll have another discussion about who you want to bring back for, for finalists.
I guess I would ask both Brenda and, and you've already been part of the processes in the past, have we had this many applicants and what did you guys choose for the process there?
I mean, I've never in my career seen this many applicants and I've never in my career seen this many people I'd be interested in interviewing to discuss with you. This is a healthy, strong pool in my opinion.
Yeah, in all my career, even beyond the school board, I've never, even top A's and stuff, never had eight. So it has nothing to do with the time for me, I've just never in my life.
Interviewed that many?
Had that many.
Jeff, what's your opinion about?
I think it'd be a tough thing to narrow the field rate. I think we have more to be, maybe than we really could based on what somebody's ability to fill out paperwork, you know, which I think we may see as we do our own vetting. And others vet this particular pool, I think aggressively, there may be some that would be easier to, but then more committed to interview, you know, at that point, but I think. When you put these out here, I think they're gonna be heavily vetted and I think I, I'm for eight, you know, just because, I don't know how you, because there's so many, they're so close, I don't know how you would have lived it again. And yet, I, you know, this is a curious process because you come in, you're, you gotta go through family and you know how hard it was, this was, if you were really doing it, I mean, I was like, how am I gonna get through this? And, and yet when you really, you kind of see what you see and then unfortunately you know some things or fortunately you know some things and then you try to read it. There's certain statements that probably get us and so I, I think I'm kind of pleasantly surprised, you know, how maybe how close we were to our MSBA and how we did it. We all kind of did what, what you did with six people too, so you got six and six coming together and kind of defining it. Pretty dang close.
Yeah.
And so you'd have to feel 12 people did a pretty good job of at least doing a good job of vetting what, what was in front of us.
Well, and you know, we talked, we're limited just like, you know, to the references that we're given, that said, you know, we're no different than anyone else, when we get together as a six and say, well, it was a good recommendation, and then there's some that are just. I mean, I'm gonna be devastated if this person's gone, you know, and that carries weight with us too and that's why we, we got to, our strategy, what I meant, probably should have said more clearly before you deliberated is, you know. A candidate might have superintendent experience, but we looked at the pool and said, it's deep and it's got enough to, you know what I mean, so that made, that, that put them on the bubble. On the other hand, we, we looked at some who haven't sat in the chair, but from everything we gathered has done a lot and we didn't want to say. You shouldn't even think about these folks because at some point they're probably gonna be one. So our recommendation is generally six, but you are free to do, and I'm not asking you to do that at all, you can do the four of four, you really can, just along, my day, definitely.
My concern with doing four, by the time we get to the fourth candidate, we are gonna be pretty tired and we're gonna be probably tired of hearing the answers because they're gonna be similar. I don't know if we're gonna give them a fair shake, having said that, uh, I do like your point, Jeff, of having enough candidates in there being able to do the vetting because. I was reading through it and it's a lot of the same words, a lot of the same sentences and it's just really hard to get a, a good accurate feel because it seems like they're, they're answering the questions professionally, so, you know, a lot of the personal story.
So our option is, if we decide to cut this down from eight, then we need to spend some more time here tonight and go through them and see who we live on A, broadly speaking. So that's our option and that's okay if that's.
We can just decide to go with A, I mean, we could.
Oh, right.
Break it down, I guess, or we could go and decide to go with A.
But if people are concerned about the number.
Yeah, so I hear if we're inkling and playing a card game, I think, and I don't want to put words at anybody's mouth, Brenda, where, maybe we just go down the list, Brenda, what do you think?
I don't, I am really either way, I just know it is a lot and you guys that have not been through this process, Josh has got it a little bit, it's a lot. And, and, but if you feel very strongly about all eight, then I think you gotta do it, but if you're not, if we're not really convinced and we're just saying, well, let's do eight and see. I mean, I think we have two top people that we all were on board with, you know, and if you think the eighth person could possibly bump them out, and there's always a possibility, I'm not saying that. But I think then you've gotta decide, is that, or is it gonna hurt them? I don't know, you gotta decide that. I go either way, but I'm leaning towards, I don't really want to interview eight, but if you guys feel strongly, I don't, I don't have a.
Josh, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm on the fence as well, um, there's some people in there that I would be okay with.
I mean, these are intense, you guys, which I don't want to scare you, but I really want you to know what you've been, what you're getting into, this isn't like an average job interview. So just mentally be ready, you can't come tired because it will wipe you right out. And, and just be prepared if we do that, that you guys know that.
I think Brenda just offered to do a coffee run.
I did.
That's what I heard. Thanks, Brenda.
No problem.
You were gonna push me a bullet? Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with eight.
Well, I just, you know, the, just statistically, you got four fours and we'd likely have to eliminate two of them.
And that's hard, I don't think you can do that.
Yeah, and.
Jen, what do you think, we'll go down the line?
I, I think we should interview the eight, I think we're investing a lot of time and money into this and I think that we should give it our all and I think it's fair to the district that we go through and do the eight, whether we're tired or not. That's not really a thing that I think we should be taking about.
I don't think it's tired though, I don't want to be misquoted there, I just think you gotta come focused because it's gonna be, you just got, and I, I agree, but don't misquote that.
Cory, where's he at?
Well, it's clear that the board was unanimous on two candidates and there was a super majority on two additional, yeah, that's where the gray area is, is we have a majority that wanna see the additional four candidates. You know, I, like I said before, I like to give people an opportunity because we don't, you know, you brought up that, a lot of those were similar. On paper and application, filling out the online stuff, I mean, that's, that doesn't really dive in and I could certainly pay Jen to say nice things about me, right? But get them in front of us, well, I mean, you know, if you're, you're picking people that are going to speak highly and give you reference, so that's to be expected as well, but when you're sitting in the hot seat, that's where, that's where we find out who we are. I'm willing to invest that in our, for our school district, you know, I, I cleared the schedule for myself, so. Cory said, said something I didn't even think about, you know, it was a three to three tight drop rate for lack of a majority, but the fours are majorities, so I didn't debate it. Less of that, even though some, obviously two people, I don't know. Where, Lori, what do you think?
I'm willing to do the eight.
Now, not to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
But if we did want to consider the six, my suggestion would be to pull those, the ones that Jeff dotted with orange and read vote to see if there are members that. Yeah, maybe we can vote to drop that candidate.
We could do that.
But it sounds like most of us want to.
Well, it's MSBA.
We are asking for their advice here, but there were eight identified candidates.
Yeah, I, I think, I don't know what the right term is, but what Brenda said is true, the self-awareness to know, am I treating these, can these be the same? As I, at the beginning when I've got a lot of energy as I am at the end and, and, you know, people can do that, you just have to be aware of it and, and think through how you're assessing.
I think you said it better than I did.
I don't know about that, and I got to listen, so I got time to.
No, but I think that's fair, I think that's fair to admit, it's not, um, like an unwillingness.
No.
It's to just know you're, you're.
If you've never been through this process, you need to know.
Yeah, you just, you have to consciously say, I have to stay alert, I have to stay engaged because number four deserves the same attention as number one, so.
Well, and you're gonna, and we talked about this already, so I don't want to insult anybody, but take good notes. Because you get, by the time you get to Wednesday night, um, you'll have heard and seen a lot.
Yeah. For sure.
And those get turned in again, but, uh, so. You, you mentioned it earlier, the MSBA, does MSBA recommend six? Generally for some of the reasons that were stated, but this is a deep pool. And, and, you know, we collectively decided that are we gonna move, are we gonna bring eight? And we agreed that let the board decide, you know, I mean, it's your decision whether we bring three or eight, but I mean, the. When you schedule those back to back, you're hoping for six really good candidates ideally, you have that and so.
And we've been in situations before, John, where we're in the middle of interviews and we're starting to kind of, some are going to the top and all of a sudden they get another offer, these people are applying in multiple.
Correct.
Some are already in it.
I was gonna say it's possible.
It's possible to lose a person or two out of this pool.
Maybe lose maybe four next, uh, what do you think?
I think, I mean, I think that, I, I know some things and I don't know other things, but your timing is so tight, is you're going on Tuesday night, so I think.
One finalist is before then.
Yeah, there's, yeah.
At least one maybe.
So wait, so what was your point about?
My, my point is we tend to see that happen more when they're, they're in a couple pools, for example, and they're finalists, so we know that they're in it. And there's a week between, because the other, the other process ends before yours will begin and then we'll get the call saying, well, you know, I want the bird in hand, right, so to speak. And that would reduce, that would reduce your pool to, to seven or six, I, I just think you're, you're, you're gonna pick tonight and then you're gonna turn it on on Tuesday and start to interview, but yeah, it's still possible you could lose somebody. So, which supports a larger, which is, supports a larger number.
Your motion.
So we could entertain a motion to interview the eight identified people and we'll see if that motion passes and if not, we'll go back to the board and see what we need to do to change. So if anyone would like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to interview A.
Okay, we have a motion to make a second, I will second.
Can somebody articulate in the motion, the letter?
Oh, for sure.
I mean, it's.
Josh.
Uh, it's a motion to interview A, C, B, F, H, J, M, and O.
And I will second it. Thanks, Josh, thanks, Jen, um, we have a motion in second, all of you just say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign, motion passed.
Thank you, I was Cory.
Yes, I did.
And now we're able to name them as a.
Yeah, read it back to me though, because I want to be absolutely sure.
So the clerk or Jody, will you read it back and we'll just see?
Do you want me to read the name as well?
No, no, we're still trying to make sure we don't tell somebody they're coming in that.
It's A, C, D, F, H, J, M, and O. You haven't voted, so I just, I interrupted to get the letter put in.
That's okay.
Yeah, we, we have been fixated on not missing a lot. So I will make the calls, hopefully tonight, not first thing in the morning. You have decided to interview Craig Anderson, he's the executive director of Teaching Learning in St. Paul Public Schools. You have elected to interview Randy Burkless, Randy Burkless, he is the current superintendent of Sacus. You have elected to interview Dr. Liam Campbell, he is currently assistant superintendent of River Schools. You have elected to interview Brian Beetz, who is currently the superintendent of Walker Hackensack Aigle Schools. You have elected to interview David Gramm, he's assistant superintendent of Hudson Schools. You have elected to interview Melinda Landsfeld, elementary principal of Stillwater Schools. You have elected to interview James Moprevich, the principal of East Ridge High School. And you have elected to interview Brent Stavik, superintendent of Rush City Schools. So, um, I'll make those calls tonight, I'll try to get the interview schedule because what they'll do is they'll go in and populate, first come, first served the interview schedule. As soon as I have that, I'll send that out with the EMD link with the questions, um, take a look at those to make sure they're what we agreed, maybe not, but I, I don't check them, but I want you to. And I'll try to do that tomorrow, most, obviously certainly no later than Monday, because you, you need a couple minutes to play around in there to see how it works, it's not complicated. Uh, at the same time, I'll send the, the audience input form to the names you gave me and they have a few minutes to play around in there too and figure out how to do it. They will use the same link I sent, uh, for the first round, you will use the same EMD link because what we do is we clear it out about nine o'clock the day of the interview. You know, so if you enter fictitious data, play with it, we clear it out and then for round two, the, the audience input form and EMD would be in the link before we cross that bridge. When we get to it, um, I'll get out a press release, uh, and on the press release, a lot of times it goes to, to your, but sometimes it goes to somebody else who works with.
Send it to Michelle as well and then we'll work together.
And then, uh, you're gonna get unsolicited advice now, uh, and I hope that's what I'm saying, because you really, unless you call a reference, I mean, and you're soliciting, but. Again, our recommendation is you listen, you be polite, obviously, thank you for your input, but try not to engage in a dialogue because that can come back and say, well, I talked to this board member and they, they were thinking just before they ever, they ever had the interview, which. It's nothing illegal, I mean, it won't reflect well on anyone. The, uh, we often ask the board chair to assign individuals on the board to do reference checks because like in this case, two people probably don't want to do eight, but maybe I'll do two. There's a form in the packet I gave you that gives a list of questions to ask and I can resend that to you, but if you don't need that, and that's for consistency's sake, so you're asking the same questions that you're asking. If anyone in the reference checks hears something of concern, call me, I mean, let's, let's talk about that, what, what you found, uh, before you report out and then typically what happens is you're gonna, you'll do the interview, you'll do a vetting process again. And members who did the, you know, what did you find, uh, when you did the reference checks and you, you stay relatively generic, so I talked to three people, they confirmed what we kind of thought we saw. You know, you don't name the reference, you don't get into necessarily negative things, um, so that's, that's the process and I can talk to you about that again before, um, before we get together.
So wait, when does, when do those calls take place, John?
Well, you're, you're, you're getting on a tight timeline.
Oh, that's why I'm asking.
So, words have done it two different ways and, and you decide, I guess I, sometimes. Sometimes they want to call when they have the candidates, you know, have these reference checks for the first round hearings, right? So they want that information, of course, before they, before they settle on a finalist. Sometimes they wait and see if there's consensus on the finalist, and then that finalist, because then that, that reduces the number of calls they have to make. That reduces the number of vetting they have. Boards do it both ways. So those calls would need to be made starting tomorrow, Monday.
And that's all we have. So is there some thought about that? Do we want to call on all eight of these before Tuesday? Or do we want to wait and see who we consider our finalists and call the references on our finalists? I know we haven't had time to, just think for a minute, tell them. And then while, while you're thinking, so John, are you going to reach out to the stakeholders that I've given you the names and emails of? And give them the process and tell them how it works to get inputs on?
Yeah, I can blank copy or CC you on what I sent out to them, so you know. And then if you could double check and make sure I didn't miss anybody today. Yeah.
Okay, that would be great. And then another question came to mine as we were speaking. Oh, are you going to assign, like, which board members are going to ask which interview questions? Or do you want me to do that? Or just as long as we do it?
I can't think of one that I've done where it hasn't just been introductions and we're going to go wrong.
Okay, sounds fine. Okay. As long as we ask the same questions for all candidates.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, what was my question? No, I asked you, what do you think about who we're vetting? Who were actually calling? Of the all eight or the finalists? In a way, it could give us information that helps us decide who should be a finalist, right? But in a way, it's, we have two days to do it that are not, that are not weekend days.
I would think what we did in the past.
You know, in the past, I recall two of us pairing up, so we were both hearing, and we called from the district office. And we had a person on speaker, and we both listened.
Yep.
We did use consistent questions for all the references we called on.
But did we do it for the finalists, or did we? I recommend doing that, because if you get stuck on a question, you got someone else listening and you might miss something. I think pairing up is a good idea.
And I know it's less convenient, because we're all busy, but there was something nice.
It was nice.
Both of us, or two people hearing what that person had to say.
But did we do it just on a finalist, do you remember? The two rounds up, thirty rounds, I didn't.
I definitely remember calling on finalists.
Right, but I don't remember calling this first round. When we narrowed it down to whatever we were going to do, two, three, or four, or whatever, then we did the following.
That's what I remember.
I've really seen it both, both ways. But I also, you have such a deep pool. It's different if a board has four coming in and then they're going to hopefully narrow it down to two, right? Because that's manageable. But on the other hand, I wouldn't want it to misinform your process, right? You want to make a decision who you're going to bring back, so.
I have a question typically when you do calls, when you've done them. I've done them in different places, but what come? Have you ever had anything come up, you go, "Wow, glad to call." You get rid of that one.
Actually, you, you think, "Well, they're not going to write someone out. He's going to say something negative." But you do hear some differences, because there's some people, like, they are just devastated this person's lead. And this person is.
Both ways.
And then there's some people who say very little, and you're like, "Okay, well, those two felt different." There actually are some differences.
It goes both ways. Like, one, yeah, like we said, sometimes I didn't realize that these people, like, all three of them are just devastated. They're applying.
Yeah.
Well.
And maybe that, that quiet, yeah.
There's eight, there's six of us. That's three and eight in pair. So three and eight is the max of two for somebody.
So three, three, two, is that what you're saying? Was that what you were talking about?
Yeah, so to be, yeah.
Well, there's eight.
Right, so.
Mathematically.
Three, three, two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And some have less, so you could go, "One's half to do, two," if you want to look and see how many. You know, some have five, some have four.
I do want to think that in town, I guess.
Or you can just split it on the line, better to just split it up right down the line, who do you want to mention, or who do you want to?
And the other issue is, you need to try to call during the school day, because these people are generally people, you'll catch them at work. And sometimes you can't get a hold of, so you might get a hold of two of your four references. And you try again, but you're together at that time. And so then you would have to meet with your partner again to try to call again. So it gets a little tricky. It's not like you're going to reach everybody you want to in the timeframe you're together doing these phone calls. So that's tricky, but we do our best to try to get a hold of all the references. We don't always. And that's the two.
I kind of think we called on a Sunday night too, and we had a, like, on a Sunday evening.
Oh, I remember calling during the day, but.
I don't remember ever calling during the day, but I don't think I was partnering with you.
Surely, you knew a conference call too, if it's something physical.
I think it was good, because you as boards didn't say, "Did you hear that? Did you, did you hear that?" When you're in the same room, you can do it.
Okay, so we need to make a decision. So we will pair up and call these eight, the references for the eight people? Does that seem reasonable? But we've got to do it Friday or Monday, folks.
I will, I can call tomorrow, but I hope you'll come.
Wait, Tuesday is the interviews.
Yeah, I'll be back on Tuesday.
Oh, it's going to be, no, okay, I'm Tuesday.
Enjoy.
Oh, I'd rather do it on the weekend. I have a big high school week meeting tomorrow in the city, so I'm out tomorrow until practice. But I can do Monday, but I'd rather try Sunday night.
Can you do it Friday? You can do it tomorrow. You need to do it tomorrow.
I can do it tomorrow afternoon or Saturday morning.
I can't Saturday. I could tomorrow.
I'm also flexible. I was just asking the question, is it, is it completely off limits to do it on the weekends?
What's your opinion, John?
No, no, a lot of times, things have changed, you know? For, for a lot of us, we'll say, "This is who I am, and I'd really like you to take ten, fifteen minutes and tell me a time that works for you and a number to reach you at." Because they, they won't answer the phones sometimes, or they don't recognize that.
So you mean you send a text?
You send an email, or, you know, you may not have that luxury, because you may not have them. But, but calling on a weekend, I talked to a lot of references on weekends. It's kind of a dull time for some.
Okay, could we just, for, in order to end this meeting, would, would we be okay if I, if I work with John to split up, to split up the candidates' references in pairs? And then it's up to you and your pair person to decide when you can make this work in the next four days? How does that sound? Instead of trying to iron it all out.
Or do you go three and three if somebody can't make one? You guys go back to, and then everybody gets four.
You mean if someone. Yeah, if there's someone who can't do it, we'll make it work. So John, I'll work.
Cory's going to do a great job.
What did you say?
I said, "I'll defer you, and you're going to make a great decision."
Oh, okay. Okay, so John and I.
I'll go with that.
Yep.
Anything else we need to be careful, John?
Oh, my check. What's, I think, the other, anything?
Okay, these eight names are now public.
Cory, did you put your names?
The ones that you voted on, they are public, yeah. And that's actually why we'll call. Or they'll stop you on the street, or they'll stop you at an event, and they'll say, "Hey, I know somebody that works somewhere." And you'll listen and you say, "Oh, I appreciate that. We'll get some time and move on."
And I'll do my best to make it with John early, so that if you wanted to make the calls tomorrow, that you have the information you need.
Are you and I partnering?
I mean.
Should I, these two and those two?
We can do that. Does that work for people? You guys, Jen and Jeff, Cory and I? And then if times end up not working, we got to reshuffle just like. So. We need a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting, folks.
I will motion.
I need a second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of returning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is adjourned.
Sarah's the girl's name.
And then John, I think I told you Sarah Johnson was. She, she would work with you.
I know, I thought it was two.